You just put your name down. It's really what they need for to make sure they get the everyone's info right. Yes, sir.
As we've got quite a few items on the agenda, it took us a couple of extra minutes in the pre-meeting. So my apologies, but good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is Monday, April 9th, 2018 at 6:00 PM and this meeting is called to order. At this time, we'd like for you to turn off your electronic devices as they tend to interfere with our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting. As such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question and answer session between staff and the board. Following staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions. Once all the questions have been satisfied, we'll have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. And please direct all your comments to the board, not the applicant. Any questions you may have during that time, we'll do our best to get them answered for you. We've got a couple of procedural things we've got to go through pretty quick here. First, we're going to table a couple of items and then we'll get right into the actionable items. First item on the agenda is 2018-160. This is zoning application Z18-008. This is to be tabled to the May 14th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of the applicant. Can I get a motion to table, please? We've got a motion, Ms. Harrington. We've got a second, Ms. Lightfoot. Please vote. It's approved 6-0. All right, the next item on the agenda, 2017-357. It's zoning application Z17021. This item is to be tabled to the May 14th, 2018 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting at the request of the applicant. A motion to table, please. Mr. Bye and seconded by Mr. Bartlett. Please vote. 6-0, it's tabled as well. Okay. Now we're going to let the fun begin.
Jump to the last item because we've got a last-minute table on that one as well.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so we're going to go out to item G, right? Is that what you've got?
Yes.
Item G, okay, we're going to table this item. It is 2018-163. This is Row 7. Motion to table, Ms. Lightfoot, a second, Mr. Bye. Please vote. And it's a We're missing somebody.
Denny.
Denny's didn't come up. It's Motion's tabled 6-0, Mr. Campo. Thank you. All right. Or Mr. Rice. All right, next item on the agenda is item C. This is 2018-66. This is zoning application Z18-0 From R20 to RAD conditional for the development of 33 single-family homes at a density of 2.92 units per acre. This is 11.32 acres, land lots, 340, 341, and 380. This is 3305 and 3311 Old Concord.
Yes, sir. Well, this request over the past two meetings from February and March, it's finally ready to go for you guys to hear. You'll hear it tonight and make a recommendation to Mayor and Council. It'll go before the Mayor and Council on May 21st. This property is located on the eastern side of Old Concord Road, almost catty-corner to the property you guys Heard and made a recommendation on a couple of months ago On the other side of Old Concord Road. The property is approximately 11.3 acres in size. There are two single-family homes currently on site. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property from R20 Cobb County To RAD conditional for the development of 33 new single-family homes. If you look at this vicinity map up there, Everywhere that's just reflected without a color is unincorporated Cobb County. And all the areas that have a color are located within the city limits of Smyrna. So to the north, you have townhomes. And to the east, you have the Crossing Shopping Center and some single-family homes. And then to the south, you have some single-family homes in the Concord Lake Village subdivision. And then you have a church and some single-family homes to the north and west across Concord, Old Concord Road. The county's future land use map reflects this as medium-density residential. There'll be no land use change for this proposed zoning. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, you'll come in off of Old Concord Road and come into the site. And there'll be a new road and a cul-de-sac on the south side of the road. And then it'll dead-end to a cul-de-sac. And you'll have 33 single-family homes. This is the location of the proposed detention facility. The site does have two stream buffers, streams that run through the site. Those are buffered waterways. Those buffers are reflected here. So as you can see, the site is encumbered by an environmental constraint that is sort of required to the lots to shrink a little bit And work around those constraints. There are a few lots that have some impervious surface area, stream buffer encroachments. And this area is to reflect the areas that the applicant is preserving in addition to offset those areas of encroachment. It's a common practice we do within development. There will be a five-foot sidewalk, two-foot grass buffer all the way through the subdivision. And then there'll be a new five-foot sidewalk along with a new deceleration lane on Old Concord Road. The applicant is proposing the following setbacks, a front setback of 20 feet, an exterior side of 20, An interior side of 5 feet, and a rear of 15. With this development, there are several variances that go along with it. They're requesting to reduce lot size from 15,000 down to 4,900 or 5,000. They're requesting to reduce the lot width from 100 feet down to 50. The front setback from 35 down to 20. The interior side from 10 to 5. The rear setback from 30 to 15. And then, of course, the impervious setback encroachment on lots 8, 9, 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. Staff has reviewed all these requests and is in full support of them. These variances are very similar to other infill developments within the general area. Here's the proposed building elevations for the homes. This picture of the subject property. And then pictures of the adjoining properties to give you some context. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning of the subject property from R20 to RAD conditional for 33 single-family homes With following conditions. I'm not going to read the standard conditions for you, but they will apply except for 2, 8, 9, 10, and 17. Those just aren't applicable for this subdivision. In addition, we're proposing some special conditions. Number 16 lays out the minimum setbacks for the development. Number 17 establishes the minimum lot size. Number 18 establishes the minimum lot width required. Number 19 establishes the minimum floor area. 20 also establishes the maximum allowable lot coverage for the development. 21 establishes the minimum driveway length, 22 feet. 22 Requires the developer being responsible for all water and sewer improvements. 23 is the installation of the sidewalk. 24 requires new curb and gutter along Old Concord Road. 25 is a right-of-way dedication. 26 is the provision of a 30-foot drainage access and maintenance easement. There's a dam located on the south side of the property that's holding up a pond for an adjoining site. And we want to make sure we had enough room for them to do any maintenance work or anything on that dam for the adjoining property. And the applicant agreed and has provided in principle that easement. 27 deals with trees within the limits of disturbance. You either have to protect those trees that are in development or you have to remove them if they're within the disturbed area. 28 is requiring a detention facility to be on HOA property. 29 is the requirement for the buffer averaging. So if you encroach into the stream buffer 1,000 square feet, then you need to provide 1,000 square feet of additional buffer elsewhere on that same stream buffer. 30 binds the approval to the site plan submitted. And 31 binds the approval to the elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any questions for Mr. Martin, Mr. Bartlett?
Rusty, one quick question, and it might be semantic. Graphically, the sidewalk along Old Concord doesn't connect to the Concord Lake subdivision?
Right.
Although it is a condition?
Right.
And then also you say it's site plan-specific?
Right.
If you could walk through that.
We don't make the applicant go back and redraw everything specific to the stipulations. If we can handle it with the stipulation, we'll do it that way. So they'll have to do the site plan on top of meeting all the stipulations.
Any other questions?
And just another point of clarification. Once it gets through the process and say it is approved, there could be additional conditions added. So we're not giving you new plans simply because of that. But once it gets through, before we actually start issuing permits, they'll give us a plan that meets those conditions. And then that's the plan that's stamped for that.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Martin. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about the application.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the owner and the applicant in this application for rezoning. I think Mr. Martin did an excellent job of reviewing a summary of the rezoning application and the proposed development in homes as well. First, I'm going to, would like to Flip to the aerial. See if I can find that. Rusty. I can do it that way. That way I can maneuver to apologize. When you look at the overview of this surrounding area, you can see how here at Concord and Old Concord, This particular area is being developed with new developments based on existing developments and their impacts on this area. And it's actually been a very positive development trend for this intersection and immediate area. You can see the subject property, just over 11 acres, it's highlighted for you. What impacts the development of this property and the surrounding properties obviously is the large shopping center directly adjacent to the east. Directly adjacent to the north is a townhome development. And then as you swing back around, you have single-family detached homes, single-family long-established neighborhood off of Old Concord That's actually in the county. And then swinging back to the actual intersection, you have newer development from and within the city of Smyrna. Also, what you get from that is this property. And that is, it could easily be an application or justified for development as townhomes or some other higher-density type of infill development. But what CS Realty saw with this property is an opportunity to actually continue and better and raise the bar In terms of providing for single-family detached subdivision of 33 homes. It continues the trend, but doing so at less density, larger lots than what's been established at the corner at Old Concord and Concord. And also providing a much-needed transition from the townhomes. Nice townhomes and nice shopping center, but providing a transition to the single-family areas along Old Concord. And so it kind of completes that puzzle from a land use standpoint. The kind of the building that you see just north on that northern boundary is a church. So it breaks that up and then you have transition into much more traditional types of single-family development. So you can just see from, when you look at that aerial picture of it, you can kind of see why this fits in from a development standpoint And from a land use and planning standpoint. I think staff picked up on that very much so as far as their recommendations for approval go as well. Turning now to the site plan itself. Let's get to it. All right, thank you, Rusty. Just so folks can see, turning now to the site plan itself, What you can see is this site plan and design actually takes advantage of the environmental constraints that it has. It properly protects those stream buffers. The small encroachment areas is actually just on the 75-foot impervious setback, not on the city and state-required stream buffers. But there's the additional 75-foot impervious setback. There's some slight encroachments on a few of the lots. But they've more than mitigated that, as Rusty pointed out, in those two areas, which, when you look at where those areas are located, We're glad those are going to be protected areas and added into the stream buffer areas, which would be undisturbed and actually provide for an amenity. It provides for a subdivision that when you move through this subdivision, when you live there, when you drive in, You'll see the room that'll be expressed through these stream buffer areas, both in the rear and through the middle. And that's that type of design that can take advantage of it. Also, with that, and in particular with this design and the conditions that staff has recommended, both standard and special, We appreciated your consideration, allowing this application to be tabled a couple of months. That's what we were working through. We wanted to make sure this site, because of the presence of the two streams, because of some of those more technical issues That our project engineer, CS Realty, met with Public Works, met with your planning department To make sure that those issues were worked through and worked out so that we could meet those expectations And make sure that we were technically accounting for both the buffers, the streams, and the layout and design overall of this subdivision. What we were able to come up with then is a very agreeable list of conditions, both the standard conditions that Mr. Martin laid out As well as the special conditions, which tie this proposal to this site plan, as well as to these building elevations That you've seen in your package and that are included as part of this. What you can see are well-appointed homes that, again, build on the strength of this area from a single-family residential standpoint And move that bar forward, both in terms of quality and lowering the density, increasing the lot size As you move away from that intersection of Concord and Old Concord. With that, lastly, there are several variances, and I just want to speak briefly on those that are requested. Those variances are requested, but are also very necessary, given the constraints of the site. But we South of it, when you compare it to other similar types of infill, single-family residential developments, Those types of variances are almost routinely seen as we try to look at spaces and properties like this That find themselves in this situation where development has occurred around them and impacting how it can be developed in the future. But in this instance, those variances, we believe, are justified. In working through those with staff, we've actually increased what we were asking for in terms of, or actually decreased the severity of what we were asking for And working with staff to lessen the impact of those proposed variances and really bring those either in line Or exceeding the standards set by other infill developments with those variances that were requested. With that, we would respectfully request your recommendation for approval. Subject to the conditions outlined by Mr. Martin, as outlined and recommended by your professional staff for approval. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as Mr. Keith Cannon of CS Realty, Who's been intimately involved in the design, and we appreciate your time here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Ms. Lightfoot.
Projected price points are expected to be in the 500s.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore? All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. Please come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and please sign the sign-in sheet at the podium. Just your name and street number, not your social security number or any of the other stuff that's up there.
I wouldn't get that anyway.
Good evening and welcome.
Hi, my name is Kay Clapper. I live at 3927 Plumcrest Road, and I have extensive knowledge about what happens when you drop a rad In the middle of a 50-year-old R20 neighborhood. So I am grossly against this project. And I went through the nine criteria for deciding zoning. And this project, in fact, going from 15,000 square feet for a lot to 5,000 Is a gross violation of even RAD conditional. That is even smaller than the 9,000-square-foot ones they put at the end of my street. So I just can't believe they want to do that. And the minimum side yard from 35 to 20 feet, and then 5 feet between homes, not even 10 feet. So according to Section 1508-1, Allowing 33 homes on 11 acres is a violation of the use and development of adjacent and nearby property. Emerson Road, Charlotte Road, Alcott Drive, Dan Place, and Hutton Trail. And all of that area behind where they're going to develop the corner of Concord Road is all R20. And if you go down further, it's all R20. And these houses were built in the 70s and 80s, and there is nothing above 500,000 in that area. So the price point is just way off for the neighborhood. Besides the architectural and aesthetics, it doesn't fit in with anything if you go east, if you go west across Concord. Redevelopment is supposed to be, according to the criteria, compatible with existing neighborhood patterns To encourage similar and complementary residential development. RAD is not compatible with existing, this historical longstanding R20 neighborhood. Changing to RAD conditional would cause excessive and burdensome use of the existing street. Old Concord is a two-way street. It's two lanes. I just came from there. I just drove on Concord. It's bumper-to-bumper now. You're going to add 33 homes, that's maybe 66 more cars. You're going to have that on top of what we have now. It's already bumper-to-bumper. Zoning is not in conformity with the policy and intent of existing R20 land use plan, Which was to encourage similar developments, not allowing lots less than 20,000, And RAD conditional is 15,000 square feet. Conditions that affect the use and development of the property is that, once you take off four inches of the topsoil, Which I haven't heard anything about trees in this plan, and you clearcut, Basically, the land becomes a virtual environmental wasteland. Nothing grows, water won't seep into the soil. Runoff will go into the street and into the neighboring houses, because that's what happened in my neighborhood. I mean, they haven't even finished all the houses, and it's already flooded North Cooper Lake. Changing historically an R20 neighborhood Doesn't conform to the open space requirements, Which, as I said, are one-story ranches that are less than 400,000. The change would also create a nuisance in the form of more congestion, traffic, water runoff, soil erosion, Destruction of natural habitat and wildlife, which I haven't heard anything about, And infestation, which is what we had, of unwanted creatures such as rats That will come to the other houses because they have no other place to go once that land is clearcut. The change would also negatively affect the historically established neighborhood by changing the lot sizes. And 2.9 homes per acre is really pushing the envelope, in my opinion. Also, Prior to the issuance of any development permit, and this is in the code, Article 2, Section 106-38A, A tree survey plan, a tree protection plan, and a tree replacement plan must be submitted to the Department of Community Development for review and approval. All reasonable efforts should be made to save specimen trees. I didn't hear a thing about trees in his plan. And you know, It's very difficult to reason with a developer who wants to just make money And not look at the long-term environmental aspects. Conserving green space Is usually difficult for someone like me to show a monetary value. Recent studies have shown, though, that economic value of retaining trees in a community are considerable. Percentage of green space in a person's living environment has a positive association with perceived health of its residents. Also, home values are raised. There's less money spent on long-term dealing with flooding issues and soil erosion, Air pollution, greenhouse gas emissions, increased electric bills because there are no trees to prevent, I mean, to provide shade. For some reason, this belief that there is no monetary value in preserving native flora and fauna Has been overtaken by a decision to base profit over the environment. Sometimes, non-economic reasons offer quality of life values that money cannot buy. Maintaining green space on each and every property offers a long-term quality of life for all the citizens in our community, Not just short-term economic benefit for the developers, contractors, and the taxes of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. Thank you for your comments. All right. Anyone else in attendance that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? Mr. Moore, can you come forward and talk to us a little bit about the trees? And if I'm reading this correctly, and I'm self-conscious about my glasses, I don't know if you can tell. I just started having to wear these things. I'm not real crazy about them. I look down and I can read clearly. I look up and everything's just crazy. Anyway, it says here 4.24 acres of open space.
Correct.
Now, I imagine that's because of the stream buffer. But can you talk a little bit about that? Because, and all the time I've been on the zoning board, I've been the chairman of the zoning board, I can't recall, well, maybe one or two, where we had such a large area of open space. Generally, a builder, most developer- Generally, a builder, most developers, want to pipe that creek and build on top of it. I know that's not functionally possible, but, I mean, we do have a considerable amount of open space. I'd like for you to touch on that and the tree issue, please.
Certainly. You did read correctly in terms of the amount of open space being 4.9 acres. And yes, it is contained primarily within the stream buffers. But again, that's because those stream buffer areas are now being permanently protected as designated open space. If this was developed under an R-15, or an R-20, or some other type of more standard development plan or design, those buffer areas would be contained within lots. You just have to have enough area to build a house outside of the protected buffer area, but that's within somebody's lot. It's not designated and permanently protected, owned by the HOA, and mandated to be maintained by them and not disturbed by future homeowners at all. So that's one aspect of why this is actually better than simply dividing it up into R-15 or R-20-type lots, is because that open space is permanently protected. Second, as it relates to the tree plan, as one of the requirements for this particular zoning category in the application, there was and has been a tree specimen save plan and tree plan that was submitted as part of the application. It was even updated after review by staff and comments. That was reviewed, updated, and resubmitted. That was part of what we were working on over the two months, and it's even referenced in the staff's analysis, that that has been reviewed and updated, and staff found it acceptable and consistent with the tree ordinance and tree specimen requirements for the City of Smyrna. So it's not something we normally address in a presentation, because it's part of the requirements for the application itself. That has been done. We're happy to provide a copy of that and can do so, but it has been reviewed by staff and noted as such. Also, I want to just clarify a couple of things. The Cobb County Future Land Use Map, this is in the county now, has this property as medium-density residential on their land use plan. Medium-density residential means Cobb County itself projected this property as being developed between 2.5, 2.5 units per acre and 5 units per acre. What we're proposing is 2.9 units per acre, so on the very low end of that. The city would have this once, if it's approved and annexed, would be in moderate-density residential, just like the property to the south. And that's how the city would have it designated, either moderate or medium. But regardless, again, this would be on the low end of those ranges in terms of its consistency with the land use plan. And lastly, just to, I just want to make sure it's clear, that when we call for a minimum five-foot side setback, that means that you have a minimum of 10 feet of separation between homes, and that's just the minimum. That doesn't mean they're all that way, but just to clarify, it's not five feet in between homes, but it's a minimum of 10.
So there are 10 feet between structures?
At a minimum, yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore or the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Yes, I'd like to move the zoning request, that we approve zoning request, Z-183, rezoning from R-20 to rad conditional for the development of 33 single-family homes at the density of 2.92 units per acre. 11.32 acres, landlots 340, 341, and 380, 3305, and 3311, Old Concord Road.
So you have a motion to approve, Mr. By. Do we have a second? We have a second, Mr. Bartlett. Please vote. Good luck with your project, Mr. Moore. Good luck. All right. The next item on the agenda is 2018-116. This is zoning application Z-18-005. Rezoning from G.C. to O.I. for the use of the building as a dormitory for Atlanta Dream Center. This is 1.84 acres, landlot 346. This is 460 Born Drive. The applicant is the Atlanta Dream Center. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
So that was tabled at the last meeting of this meeting. You guys will hear it tonight and make a recommendation to Mayor and Council. This one's a little bit different from the other one. This will go straight into Mayor and Council next week at 16th on Monday night at 7:00 PM, where they'll hear it and they'll make a final decision. This site is located at 460 Born Drive. It's just north of the Adventure Outdoor Site and just east of Smyrna Grove. It's approximately 1.84 acres. It's currently a vacant church site. There are three to four buildings on site. The applicant is proposing to use those buildings as a dormitory for students studying for missionary work and that are being trained at the Atlanta School of, geez, this slipped my mind, I'm sorry. Atlanta Dream, Atlanta School of Ministry, in partnership with Atlanta Dream Center. Thank you, guys. They're requesting to change zoning from G.C. to O.I. conditional to make this happen. This is the future land use map. As shown on the future land use map, is identified as public institutional. Falls within that land use category, therefore, no change in future land use is necessary. The adjoining properties to the north, east, and south are mixed use, and property to the west is moderate-density residential. Here's a picture of the site plan proposed. These are existing buildings. There'll be minimal work on the outside. Most of the work is going to be on the interior of these buildings. The existing building to the south, the largest one you see there, is approximately 14,000 square feet. They will convert the offices and classrooms in that building to 10 dorm rooms that'll have six beds per room, in addition to four full baths. The next building to the north, northeast, that is a 5,400-square-foot building. It'll have 10 dorm rooms and five full baths. One dorm will house the male students and the other one will house the female students. In total, they're proposing 120 students for this site. Right now, they're at around, they're projecting around 80 students start off, and then they'll grow into the 120. The smaller building to the south is a storage building, and that may be converted to a gym in storage for the facility. As part of this request, they do want to clean up some of the existing non-conformities with the site. The first one being for building number one, and that's to reduce the street-side setback from 50 feet to 10 feet. Number two is for building number one, and that's to reduce the rear setback from 40 feet to five feet. Number three is for building three, and that's to reduce the rear side setback from 40 to 30. And number four is for the second building, the 5,400-square-foot building, for the side setback reduction from 15 to 1. And like I said, there is no new building addition or anything associated with this. This is just correcting an issue that is there currently today. They're proposing 58 parking spaces, and you can see those spaces there. And then they're proposing to remove that concrete foundation. These, this is the pictures of the site today, and then some adjoining properties to give you context. Community Development recommends approval of proposed rezoning from G.C. to O.I. conditional for use as a dormitory with the following conditions. Number one, that the site be, provide enough parking for, at a ratio of one parking space, I mean, 1.5 parking spaces per dorm room and one space per every 100 square feet of common space. Number two, the facility should be limited to 20 dorm rooms with a maximum of 120 kids. Any increase will require approval through Mayor and Council. So if they expand and they're successful, then they'll have to come back and get approval to expand their use. Number three, the applicant shall remove the existing concrete foundation. Number four, the applicant shall remove the existing sidewalk and parking area along Old Concord Road. That was a, pretty much, a makeshift parking area that the church used, and we feel it creates traffic issues on Old Concord Road when you have people backing out on Old Concord Road to get out of those parking spots. So we'd like to eliminate them, since they have enough parking within their general parking area. Number five, the applicant shall replace the curb and gutter along Old Concord Road and provide a new five-foot sidewalk along Old Concord. This is all in conjunction with stipulation four, with removing that concrete and sidewalk area. Number six is a requirement for three-inch caliber street trees along Old Concord Road at a spacing of 40 linear feet. Number seven, the developer shall be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary by the Public Works Director. Number eight, the developer shall provide any fire access improvements deemed necessary by the Fire Marshal's Office. And number nine just requires the dumpsters to be screened with three-sided brick enclosure and opaque gate. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about your plan. Good evening.
Thank you for letting us propose this to you. We're excited for this idea and this concept. It is unique. It is basically a great way to understanding, I'm not the guy, the guy that was this here earlier, he was really smart, and I'm not that guy. I'm a pastor, and I'm the director of the school, so I can give you the heartbeat in what we do and how we go about it, and what we do when we walk to a community. These two gentlemen behind me are the smart guys, if you guys have any technical questions about those kind of things. And so I'm going to just give you a little bit of a brief on what we do. We're an alternative school of college. Right now, 80% of young people that choose degrees that have to do with ministry, such as pastoral care and counseling, or ministry of missions or youth, 80% of them are not able to go into their field afterwards because of college debt. Average, not the average, a low college is $26,000 for a private school, and our Georgia State doesn't give hope, only barely a piece of hope to a private school. So a lot of these young people have to get a huge debt in order to get those degrees and are unable to go into their fields afterwards, because if you know anything about ministry, especially for most churches that are 100 or less, pay is not great. And so they do cannot pay their loan fees back, so therefore, they get other jobs. So our way of doing it is, I went to Bible school, I walked out with $22,000 in debt. Took me a long time to pay that off. And now what we've done, as we've got creative, we have started a ministry tech school, and through that, we have now have accreditation through Ecclesiast College, where they get their four-year degree in Biblical Studies. Also, through Visible College, they get certified in the arts. We also run art school in our ministry school, where they do dance, drama, step, worship, music, all kinds of different bands. So these guys are able to come at a very low price of $6,400 a year, and they are also able to get some financial aid towards that, so it ends up being around $5,400. They need to come out of pocket. We have them raise that money during that year, and they cannot go into the next year until it's raised, so they actually leave our school debt-free, so they can enter the mission field or the ministry they want with a low-paying job or with raising support. These guys are working downtown. All of our ministry that we do is downtown. It will not be in Smyrna, outside of partnering with other churches and just being a part of the community, but none of our outreach is. If you look up Atlanta Dream Center, it's a unique ministry. It's been going on for 14 years. If you look to our city mayors, they have really enjoyed who we are. We are not somebody that brings homeless people together. We are not somebody that feeds them in conjunction, nor do we house them. We literally go look for those that want help at that point in time. We still do not house them. We get their IDs and those kind of things, and we put them into long-term cares throughout the United States, not just in Georgia, whatever best fits them. We have over 75 different partners that we work with, that we send them into their long-term care or back to their homes. Some are out of state, a lot of them are out of state, and so we work with that. We are not a homeless shelter, we're not a homeless feeding place, and nor are our students. Our students are not a part of that whatsoever. They're coming from all over the United States, actually, have them from Australia and also Europe, that come and do training and learn how to do ministry here. When they're here in Smyrna, this will be their house, this will be their place they call home, this will be the place that they will go shopping, where they'll eat, and these are incredible students. They're not troubled teens. These are 18 to 30-year-olds that have heart to make an impact in the world, much less the community they're in. These are the stand-up young people. We are working the corporate world, we work a lot with Levy Restaurants and those kind of things, working to raise their funds. We get the highest ratings. They call us first, and we go to the U.S. Open, to Kentucky Derby. These guys call us, and these are the type of students they want and type of people they want working for them. So you're getting the high-class, young people coming in that will be here, and also during the day, will be gone, and during the evenings, will be back eating at the Waffle Houses and doing those kind of things that are next door. So that kind of gives you a gist of just who we are. We are definitely unique, meant to be unique, and we believe we're making a great impact. And we've been doing this for over 14 years, financially stable, ready to make an impact here in Smyrna, if you so allow us. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
Again, I will give you the ratio to them, but it's...
Yeah, we're just a little concerned.
Yeah. The ratio, could you come up and give me that ratio?
Sure.
Yes. They have the whole plan. I looked at it, I liked it, so it's great.
I'm Mike Beddingfield, Construction Management Associate. I'm just a consultant on the project at this point. The girls' dorm is the, not the main church building, but the northeast building, that's 5,000 square feet, so it's 54, I think, is actually 5. Will have 10 rooms with six people each, and then it's got one large, like a college dorm bathroom would be, that's got six toilets and five showers for 60 people. And then we're doing something similar in the existing church building. It's split over two floors, but it's basically five dormitories upstairs with two or three bathrooms, and then the same on the second floor with two or three bathrooms.
Ms. Harrington has a couple of questions.
Good evening, Mr. Palmer. How are you?
I'm doing wonderful.
So none of the classes will be taught in this building, this facility at all? Everyone will be transported downtown to the, your other facility?
Yeah. At this moment, that's our plan. We don't plan on leaving our class facilities that we have downtown, which we do, we have our kitchen downtown as well, so all our feeding's done downtown as well. So that's where we plan on keeping our classes. We do do evening arts, where some of those things may actually take place up here, because there is a sanctuary still there that we're not changing and we're not touching at this point in time, as far as converting anything. So we may be doing those kind of classes there, but none of our theological classes, leadership classes, or counseling-type classes, or academic-type classes will not be. Maybe some of our arts that we do at night, some of the training, we travel all over the United States with our arts. They may do some training in that sanctuary.
Can you give me an idea about the build-out on-site, the common spaces, where they have a leisure area, study area, anything that's the amenities for them there?
Yeah, great, great question. So in the second building that is up there, I should have brought your plans that you had, but in the girls' dorm, they have the whole center area, they have a library, they have a common place, and then they have an open area to hang out for the girls. They also have an office that will be in there, a laundry room that will be in there is also in the girls'. In the church building, which is like 14,000 feet, whatever it was, there's plenty of space for the guys to be, there's a whole lobby, there's a downstairs area as well for them, which is right now wide open for, which was a fellowship hall, which they will have for themselves. And then there's a common area, which is the sanctuary where they'll all be able to come into. And then you also heard about the gym. It is actually already a gym. It's a three-quarter-sized gym that's already in there, it has basketball hoops in there. It's a little rundown, we have to take care of those things, so they would also have that as an activity for themselves.
On the building three, do you have any, other than the gym, do you have any future plans to house more students? Or I still have a problem with the ratio of bathrooms to students, with nine bathrooms and 120 students, that breaks down to about 13 people per facility, if you were, you know, that, for a... down to about thirteen people per facility, if you were, you know, um, that, for young adults, that seems like there is not going to be enough.
Yeah, so, again, I think it was ten bathrooms, but I could have been wrong with that number, and we are also going to make sure that ratio works. We, the blueprint on the girls is making it, is their ratio on bathroom and toilets to showers is a great ratio, especially the way we're at currently right now, we're at eighty students, and about forty to forty right now, we want to get to a hundred and twenty is what we're after, and we believe we will because of the dorm and the location in Smyrna, which is a great city. Um, I, at this point, building three, we have no intention in growing, and if we do, we have to go back through the rezoning process to do that, so we're not even in the thinking of that right now. We want them to have a great area to be, we want them to have fun, we want them to have, uh, places where they can just be young and have a great time and have a place to do that on campus there. So, we don't have any plans to adding that on whatsoever. Um, and in the bigger building, there's room to put more bathrooms in there if so needed. Um, so yeah, I went, went my college that I went to, I was in, it was a military barracks, although it wasn't military anymore, it was a university, we didn't have what we're giving these guys, and I paid a lot more money than they paid for, it was just one of those, especially for freshmen and sophomores, they put us in these old, what they used to be old military bank that they bought, and that's where we were. So, uh, we shared those showers with many guys, and, um, we just rotated, and that's where these guys come, they come a little bit knowing that there's a little bit of sacrifice, sixty-four hundred dollars for your tuition, um, you're not getting the state-of-the-art, but you're getting a nice deal for what's going on, so.
What is the age range of your students?
Typically, most of them runs from eighteen to twenty-five, we do have a few older ones at twenty-eight, twenty-nine, or whatever that might come.
Uh, one last question on the improvements, uh, the documents state that you're only going to do interior renovations and nothing to the exterior. Building number two is, um, somewhat confined, it's, there's no windows, as a dormitory, it looks like there's no natural light to be coming in at all?
No, they, they definitely be putting, implementing windows and new doors, so that would be the exterior, they will be doing that, there's no adding to the building itself, but yes, they're going to be putting, moving some doors, adding windows to every door, so we're gonna have to for the fire codes, that we have to make sure they have exiting plans and those kind of things with each dorm, so they will all have windows for each room that's going to be in there, they'll also have different, more doors than currently available at this point in time. So there will be some of that exterior in that sense, but not exterior as far as a build-out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Palmer? All right, thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you very much, guys, thank you very much.
All right, this is a public hearing, at this, at this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Mr. McNabb, good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board. My name is Mike McNabb, I live at seven fifty Austin Drive in Smyrna, and I am the Public Relations Director for Adventure Outdoors, your immediate neighbor to the south. Uh, so we congratulate you on the planned use for this facility, but as you might imagine, we're a little concerned about what could potentially go next door with this approval. So I would simply ask that paragraph two of the conditions be read a, as follows, that the facility should be limited to a maximum of twenty student dorm rooms with a hundred and twenty student beds. And the reason I say that is I don't want approval for a dorm facility going next door to our largest, we're probably the largest retailer in Smyrna, if not, we're probably the second or third largest retailer. Uh, but we would be very uncomfortable if this was a homeless shelter next to our retail establishment, we'd be very uncomfortable if this was a, a future use of halfway house for people suffering with addictions, as you would if you owned a business, uh, as well. So we would simply ask for you, the board, to put a restriction on this that simply limits this dorm use to student use, and I would leave it at students, theological studies, uh, academic studies, uh, art studies, I don't have a problem with what they're studying, but as long as they're students, we would be comfortable with that. We would ask that if they want to turn this facility into some other type of dorm use, that it come back before mayor and council and back before your body, and we think that's a reasonable request as an existing retailer in the community. So thank you for that consideration.
Thank you, Mr. McNabb. Any other comments?
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Gary LaRue, sixty eleven Bordeaux Walk in Smyrna. I come before you, just ask a few questions and comments regarding this particular development. Um, the development is for a dormitory for up to one hundred and twenty students, in a dormitory of six students per room or per location. Um, we are concerned by the chairman or the president for our association of a hundred and ninety-two homes at Chateau Walk. The question would be number one, why is it being located here in Smyrna in such a disparate distance from the actual school itself? Typically, universities and school settings are a campus setting, where universities, their teaching classes and courses are taught within a range of the dormitories. I worked at Georgia Tech, the dorm rooms are within a, a walking distance of the classrooms and classroom settings, where other students interact and become part of the university. Uh, why are we looking at such a long disparate distance where students are being bused from Smyrna into Atlanta proper to have the educational program provided? A secondarily question I have for this organization is that, uh, this is a university, this university has to fall underneath ADA requirements, that means, um, ADA of nineteen ninety, uh, this building must be meeting ADA code requirements for bathrooms, facilities, access and doors. I do not have heard yet any plans of the renovations to ensure they're fulfilling the ADA requirements for a university setting for a dormitory, and therefore, until I hear that, as being part of the requirements for safety of the hundred and twenty students and for the access for those who have disabilities under ADA, should be allowed the ability to have access to this facility within the ADA requirement of nineteen ninety. Third concern I have is that, in reading the financial statements of the, the organization, this organization, Atlanta Dream Center, as of two thousand and sixteen, had roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of cash total, total assets a hundred, two hundred and sixteen thousand. I don't understand where they're going to find the capital to invest in or build and do the kind of renovations required to bring these facilities to code, to ADA code, and provide a facility which is safe and secure for a hundred and twenty students to reside, some of those who should be and should be allowed to be students which are with disabilities.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue.
Thank you.
Anybody else in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application? All right. Uh, we've got some, I'm sure some more questions at this point, or do we have any more questions at this point? Am I the only one with a question? Lightfoot, you want the applicant to come back?
Yes, Mr. Palmer.
I wasn't able to take notes, I apologize.
Considering the financial, uh, statements that he just made, how do you plan to finance the renovations?
So he's looking at the Atlanta Dream Center, which is also correlated with Atlanta School Ministry and also Atlanta Dream Center Church, and we also have heavy donors who also pour into us when it comes to brick and mortar, and we have Bravfil and Gori backing us up, making sure this build-out happens, other contractors coming in and making these things happen with us.
You speak a little louder, please.
Oh, I'm so, so sorry.
That's all right.
So we have like Bravfil and Gori and these type of people that are volunteering and also donating their time and also helping us with our capital, with our loan, we already have a private loan and a bank loan that we've been with for fourteen years, who we've been able to work out all of our situations and our finances with them, but I, I mean, I do understand his need, but we've talked with the staff as well, with these, these things are, the ADA thing, we can't even do this without the approval, we already went through with the staff, we do have some prints we can go through and show, uh, they're not fully detailed yet, but we're going to be going through all those, making sure, of course, every student, everybody should be able to come to this school if they have a disability or not disability, and making sure that happens and that requirement takes place. So financially, we're fine, and financially, we have the backing, we don't carry high cash because we're not a for-profit, so we tend to give, use all of our money towards the ministry to build-outs and to the people themselves, and then when we need more cash, we ask for those volunteers and those people that have been behind us for many years on our board and around our board members to come and participate in such things like this. If you've been a part of any church, you know how they usually do, they're raising their funds, we have already done that, got that ready of commitments, verbal commitments to make sure that we can establish this here. The reason it's so far away, you know, it'd be great in downtown of Atlanta, but if you looked at property value downtown Atlanta right now, and we're right now right by Pont City Market where our location is at, our facility is at, that market is just an insane amount of money, the city's going to run into issues for how much, uh, how high the cost of living's going up, um, and it just makes sense for us to step outside of that side to keep our costs low. We're not Georgia Tech, we don't charge thirty thousand dollars to come to college, we charge sixty-four hundred, and we're very, we're very smart and wise about what we do with our stuff, and so we can make sure the cost stays low. And this is also in partnership with East Baptist Church, who's actually the owner of this building at this point, and they are also working with our finances for us so we can make sure we can financially stay here and be here with them.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant, Mr. Bartlett?
To the, to the previous comment of making a stipulation about this being a dormitory for students, is that something we can do, or is that even needed, knowing that if it does change, it does need to come back before?
Oh, decided part of the student part, I, I'm fine if you guys make that stipulation, I mean, we, we have no, no direction of going that farther, I'd, I'd be fine if you guys made it, only said the word student, I'm happy, that's one of my favorite stores, so whatever he asks, I'm fine with that, as long as I get a discount when I go, I'm just kidding.
Any, um, any other questions, comments? Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you very much, y'all.
All right, at this time, is there any further discussion?
No.
No. All right, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to, uh, make a motion to deny zoning request for Z eighteen dash zero zero five rezoning from G C to O I for use of, of a building as a dormitory for Atlanta Dream Center, on one point eight four acres, land lot three four six at four six zero Boren Drive for the Atlanta Dream Center.
We have a motion to deny, do we have a second? You had to hit, hit the motion button. Motion to deny, Ms. Harrington. We have a second, Ms. Lightfoot. On the motion to deny, please vote. Okay, the motion to deny passes five to one, um, with Mr. Bartlett in opposition. Gentlemen, um, appreciate what you guys do and your ministry, and hopefully, this is a, not a setback, but a setup for the future, so, good luck to you.
Mr. Chairman, just so everybody understands, whether you've got approval or denial or approval with conditions, it still moves forward.
Yes.
Um, so, it's still on track, as said, it, it goes to mayor and council next Monday with that.
So this will be at mayor and council, when, Mr. Sudrith?
Next Monday.
Next Monday?
Yeah.
Good luck at mayor and council. All right. Ah, I did that wrong. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item two zero one seven dash three one four. This is zoning application, Z one seven dash zero one four. Rezoning from N S and O I. Project with three hundred and ten multifamily units, a hotel, fifteen thousand square feet of retail space, and eighty thousand square feet of office space. This is eight point seven acres, land lots eight eighty and eight eighty-one, this is twenty-eight hundred and twenty-eight ten, Spring Road, West Plan Investor Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Mr. Sudrith, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've stated in the other requests, this one has been tabled multiple, multiple times, um, and it's being moved forward tonight. Um, so, I won't spend a lot of time, uh, orienting you to this, because we've done this in the past, but this is on Spring Road, it's known as Emerson Center, um, as a, uh, strip, uh, center on the front, which is in the city, the rear of the property, uh, which is shown on the screen, uh, is actually in the county, and so this is a rezoning and an annexation, or, or actually, I should say it's an annexation and then a rezoning. Uh, we are dealing with the, uh, zoning portion of that, uh, request tonight. Again, because, uh, it is in the county, the city has the front part, um, its own, uh, regional activity, uh, center for the future land use, but the county has it as the same way, uh, as well, and that's what, um, this mixed-use proposal would remain as a regional activity center. What's on the screen is the, uh, proposed site plan. We have multiple fly-ins to, to help orient you, uh, to what's going on. So up towards Spring Road, um, in the upper left, you have a six-to-twelve-story hotel that is proposed, uh, with the potential of having a hundred and forty to two hundred and fifty rooms, uh, with underground parking. To the right of that, along Spring Road, you've got a two-story retail building, fifteen thousand square feet. The large, uh, red block there, uh, shows a five, uh, to six-story multifamily, um, building with structured parking. Um, structured parking in this sense we're referring to is it's, it's part of the structure, but it's not underground, it's next to. Uh, and then finally, you have in the last, uh, red block, uh, an eighty thousand square foot office building. They're proposing, uh, two right-in, right-out access points off of Spring. There's a full access drive, uh, on Spring, uh, on Spring Hill Parkway towards, on the, on the backside, which we call the backside of the property that runs along, um, uh, I two eighty-five. There are multiple variances that they have requested, um, their increase, uh, they want to, um, increase the ma- the maximum front setback from twenty feet to twenty-five, increase the maximum building height from five to twelve stories, increase the, uh, density per acre from twenty-five to thirty-five units per acre. They want to eliminate the, uh, requirement for consistent building edge on Spring Road, uh, want to allow off, the potential for off-street parking between building, uh, between the buildings and the street, um, eliminate a requirement for a public plaza, the potential to allow a drive-through building, although that, uh, uh, is not part of this request, there is that potential there, so we wanted to make it, uh, we've added that as a variance, um, so that it's understood, you're either going to, uh, address it with an approval or denial, so that it's clear what can, what can happen there. Um, they want to reduce the landscape easement from fifteen to five feet, reduce distance on the curb cuts from two hundred to one hundred and fifty, and then reduce the rear setback from a hundred to thirty-five feet. These are requirements that are in the ordinance, um, in various places, but these come from the mixed-use section, uh, of the zoning ordinance. This is a, um, representation of what the proposed multifamily building would look Again, another, uh, perspective, uh, this shows a two-story, um, retail building, um, that I had referenced earlier, uh, up towards Spring Road, and then in the back, you see the multifamily. Uh, this would be, although this is proposed multifamily building, this would be the office building, and then the proposed hotel building, and again, they're asking for anywhere from six to twelve stories on that. In the, uh, report, there's a lot of reference to the Spring Road L C I master plan, the reason that we brought this up has to do with, um, multiple items, one has to do with, um, connectivity, uh, the other has to do with, uh, potential future- One has to do with connectivity, the other has to do with potential future, you know, just plazas that are referenced in the L C I plan. These are pictures of the subject property and the adjacent properties. Staff's recommendation is for denial of this request. The proposed plan does not meet the goals and intent of the Spring Road L C I master plan. As currently designed, the proposed uses within the site are isolated and independent of one another. The ranges in building heights and number of rooms of the proposed hotel are different than submitted for the D R I. The L C I study suggests that a selective service type of establishment, meaning a somewhat upgraded from the conventional limited-service hotel, would indeed be possible in the area. Staff doesn't have enough information to determine exactly what type of hotels being proposed, and as such, is not supportive. Current design does not encourage the essential interactions between the uses to make it a successful mixed use. Again, we feel that uses are actually standing, even on, even though they're on the same site, they're standing independently of each other. The proposed plan presents concerns with respect to fire, safety, accessibility, as well as stormwater concerns. We think it negatively impacts the opportunity of the city to achieve the goals in the L C I master plan. We think there's a high opportunity cost that we would have to, we would end up losing abilities to be able to achieve that. There is a lot of other reasons listed in the report. Obviously, this is just a presentation of the highlights of all of that. But staff's not really supportive of all of those variances. I mean, there's ten variances there. Staff's only supportive of four of those. There's a condition about how this development will be brought to life, that the apartments will be the first part of that. And prior to issuing a C O and finalizing out that development, they have put in as a condition that staff doesn't feel is strong enough to achieve that. They are saying that the hotel and the retail and, and the office would apply for their land development, which in that, in that case, we would interpret that as a building permit, that they would apply for all of that. The process is such that you can apply for a building permit and never pick it up. You can never come to pay for it. Staff doesn't support that wording. We have a lot of concerns about how this site actually is going to come to fruition. And so, we, we are, we're not supportive of that wording in that. There's several other examples within the report. I'm not going to go over each and every one in the presentation. You have that information in your reports. There's at least a dozen reasons that staff has outlined throughout the report. But I think we've given you a highlight that we feel that there's still a lot of unanswered questions, and staff is not comfortable recommending approval of this request, and as such, that's why we have a recommending denial.
Thank you, Mr. Sudrith. And is there, are there any questions for Mr. Sudrith while he's still up here? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, we'd like to have the applicant. Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
Can you go over the four variances that you do support?
Sure. I left them over here.
Okay. Sorry, Tom, I was laughing with you, not at you. Not at you, I promise.
I'm going to join you in putting my reading glasses on.
Hey, more the merrier, all right?
All right.
I'm sorry.
Increase the maximum front setback for the retail building from twenty to twenty-five feet. Not supportive. Increase the maximum allowed building height from five to twelve. Yeah, we, because we think the site needs to be densified, so I don't have any problems with increasing those kind of issues. Eliminate the requirement to have a consistent building edge along the public sidewalk. No, I think that's what we want. And there's parking between the sidewalk and those buildings, there is not a strong edge there, so we're not supportive of that. To allow off-street parking between the building and the right-of-way, well, we just sort of covered that, so staff's not supportive of that. To eliminate the requirement for a public plaza or places that are connected to pedestrian zones, they want to eliminate that? No, we're not supportive of that. To allow the drive-through, the potential for a drive-through facility, they haven't asked for that, as I said, but we want to make sure, so, you know, we're not supportive of having a drive-through there. They also talk about, if we go further, reduction to require landscape easement along Spring Road from fifteen feet to five feet, not supportive of that. Reduction in the distance between curb cuts, yeah, supportive of that, because they have existing curb cuts there. And reduction of the minimum rear setback from a hundred and thirty-five feet, because it's already a developed site, even though they would be taking it down, we're supportive of that. So, that's where staff is coming from on the variances. Tom, I hope I've answered your question on that.
Sorry. Any other questions for Mr. Sudrith? No? Thank you, Tom. We good? We good? Okay. Mr. Sambs, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you and members of the planning and zoning board as well. For the record, my name is Garvis Sambs, and I represent West Plan concerning this application for annexation and this application for rezoning. I've got with me tonight Mr. Brad Johnson of, of West Plan, and so at the appropriate time, both he and I can respond to any questions, addressing concerns you may have. This is a, an interesting piece of property. It's only one other zoning in my entirety of my career that I've spent as much time on, and when I say time, I mean a number of years. We first started looking at this property in two thousand and eight, when Melanie Pritchett was the, the council, the council member in whose ward this was located. Of course, this is, is in Derek Norton's district now. And at that time, we were looking at assembling these properties and adding additional properties to it. For various reasons, the particular owner of that property was not able to, to really tee it up in a, in a situation that was palatable from anyone's perspective and didn't really have the financial wherewithal to do it, so ultimately, he went into bankruptcy. My client, West Plan, and Mr. Johnson bought it in bankruptcy in, in May of two thousand and seventeen, which happened to be thirty days after the city had adopted the, the L C I study, upon which so many of the, the staff's comments emanate. So, the only other zoning I've had for this long in City of Smyrna is Riverview, which started in Cobb County, was annexed into the city, and by golly, if it isn't being developed right now, I know y'all are proud of that with not only the multifamily, but understand the, the townhome component of that is coming forward. The, this property consists of eight point seven acres. The, the front part along Spring Road is a shopping center, sort of underperforming lineal shopping center, zone N S in the city, preponderance of the site, probably seventy-five percent of the site, the balance of it is O and I, office institutional. And it's got the Emerson Building. If you've ever gone I, down I two eighty-five, or up and down, or back and forth, you can see the building's prominently situated on the property, but it's got functional obsolescence, really, as a, as an office building. It's empty, a, as well as a number of other buildings on the site. These applications are for rezoning and annexation, I submitted them on July the fourteenth of two thousand and seventeen, and it was determined by, by staff at that time, and, and us, consensually, that there needed to be some more work done on that. So, there was, and then it ultimately went into, a couple months later, we had reached thresholds, certain thresholds of development that qualified this as a development of regional impact, which is a, a trigger point for putting it before the Atlanta Regional Commission and the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. I'm not trying to get technical, I'm just trying to give you an evolution of what got us here and where I believe that we are. So, that process lasted a couple or three months. In January, February this year, we got back favorable recommendations, glowing recommendations, as a matter of fact, from A R C and Georgia Regional Transport, Transportation Authority, specifically with respect to pedestrian connectivity, specifically with respect to intra, an interparcial access, and also focusing upon aerial pedestrian connectivity from the site across Spring Road as aerial pedestrian connectivity and aerial pedestrian connectivity at the bottom of the site, which has a great deal of fall and topo, across I two eighty-five to connect with Cumberland Mall. So, what West Plan's proposing now is, if we're through that process, we, we revised the stipulation letter, as you can see, and you have it dated March twenty-six, with some, and I've given you some handouts of, of the revised site plan, which Mr. Sudrith showed you, and, and the, what I think are stunning architectural renderings and elevations depicting the architectural style of the various components, the hotel, the multifamily, the office, the retail, and the flex retail as well. This is a robust area of the city, of the county. There's four quadrants of the confluence of I two eighty-five and Cobb Parkway, one of which has the four hundred million dollar mixed-use development, known as the Battery, which is contiguous adjacent to SunTrust Park. So, one quadrant's complete, the other quadrant is the, the Galleria Mall and associated mixed-use development that surrounds that. The other quadrant is Cumberland Mall, which has been in existence since the late seventies and recently had facelifts and is, is a valuable concern. This is a very critical corner. It didn't go quite all the way down to Cobb Parkway, but it's still a critical quadrant of the confluence of those rights of way. This is going to be a hundred million dollar development. That's less than the Battery, but, but it's also about a third of the Battery's size, but it is a mixed-use development, and its components will be a six to twelve-story hotel. And the reason there's such a, a wide range between there has nothing to do with the city's regulations. They would probably support a twenty-foot in height, twenty-story in height hotel, but it's to accommodate the various flags that want to go here. Right now, we're principally talking with Marriott and the various flags that they have under, under Marriott. It'll be, we set a dual, a hotel, a dual-flagged hotel, but it probably will be one in the range between the hundred and forty to the two hundred and twenty keys. The multifamily is, is three hundred and ten Class A, highly amenitized multifamily luxury homes. The price points will compare favorably to what you're seeing in the Battery that Pollock Shores has done in terms of price points per square foot, per lineal foot. And ten thousand square feet of oriented, Spring Road-oriented, commercially-oriented space, pardon me, is a part of the multifamily component. That is amenities, coffee shops, business centers, the leasing office, that part of the multifamily component. And then the three store, three to four-story office building, eighty thousand square feet back on the back part of the property, two-story flex retail office with probably retail the bottom office on the top, a total of fifteen thousand square feet right there on Spring Road. And as I mentioned, the positioning of future aerial pedestrian connectivity, which is envisioned both on our Spring Street, Spring Road rather, and our I two eighty-five frontage. And if it goes over to on the north side of Spring Road, there's ultimately planned connectivity between what is now the Nally dealership site and the Battery Braves SunTrust operation on the other side. We envision, your planners envision, I think everyone envisions ultimate and total pedestrian and vehicular connectivity for all four quadrants of this. This is a little city. No, it's a big city, and it's your biggest job center, not only in the city, but in Cobb County, far outreach in the other regional activity in the town center area. I've mentioned that the A R C and Greta both have, one does a regional review finding that's A R C, the other one does a notice of decision, that's Greta. Greta sets forth system improvements and public improvements, and then improvements that are relative specifically to this, to this development. Those are, those are favorable. Your staff has found, and if you've seen your staff's analysis and recommendations, they go through what's called Steinberg criteria. It, it's legal, legalese for the criteria that the Supreme Court of the state of Georgia has set up, which either relates favorably or unfavorably to a rezoning annexation application. The staff has found that this is a suitable use in view of the use and development of adjacent properties. The staff has found that it will not adversely affecting, affect the use or usability of adjacent or near properties. Your staff has found that the development is not expected to cause any adverse impact upon existing street networks, transportation, stormwater management facilities, or other infrastructure. Your staff has found that it conforms to the city's future land use map and the county's future land use map within a regional activity center. By the way, we've received written support from Cobb County, as well as their formal letter of no objection. So, with A R C and Greta and the county and the two future land use maps and the two comprehensive land use plans all point to approval of this. Your staff has found that it may enhance architectural standards and aesthetics of the general neighborhood, as you can see by the architectural renderings, elevations you've got, that it will not create a nuisance. That was number six. Number seven, that it may not adversely affect adjoining property in the general neighborhood or other uses. Take a look at what's there now. It, it once was a, a functionally, absolutely cutting-edge office facility with at least a vibrant commercial component along the Spring Road frontage. It's not anymore. The only point we separate from in terms of the suitability of this for the purposes that we seek to annex and rezoning happens to be a community open space within the site plan, which is easily, easily added in the first time, to my knowledge, that it's been mentioned, although it is in the L C I. And then interparcial connectivity and a design that allows substantive interaction. I guess those are rather subjective criteria, but nevertheless, that, that's, that's staff's position. And then, to be candid, staff's position in not knowing, well, you're just going to build the apartments. What happens if the economy goes bad, or if the, your developer, who is, West Plan is the master developer, this, what, what happens if it goes south and we're left with apartments? What happens with the thirty-three home subdivision that Kevin Moore proposed, then they build two houses and it goes black? You know, what happens to Johnquill if they quit building on it now? Excuse me, Belmont? And then, and then also Johnquill, if it quits being built? Now, this is specific to the site plan you have before you. That's a condition, a stipulation of the zoning, has to be built in that fashion. And it's also tied in, as, as really no other development that I know of, in doing this in the City of Smyrna for over three decades, we have tied it in to the issuance of certificates of occupancy for the multifamily based upon either the application for or the issuance of permits with respect to the hotel, office, retail components. It's, I mean, I understand, it, this is not an adversarial situation between the staff and, and my client. It's trying to, to comport with something that came into existence a, a little over thirty days prior to my client purchasing the property, and we think we've done a really darn good job of, of doing that. And so, we would respectfully suggest that you follow the recommendations of the A R C, of Greta, the wishes of Cobb County, follow your future land use map, follow your comprehensive land use plan, and, and recommend approval as we present it this evening, and you as a planning commissioner recommend to the mayor and the city council that be approved. be approved. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Mr. Johnson, I can respond to any questions that you can have.
Thank you, Mr. Samz. All right, we'd like to open the floor for questions for the applicant, please. Mr. Campa?
Garvins, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have read the community development staff recommendations and their concerns a number of times.
Yes, sir.
And I know the project that you're proposing, the size and the magnitude, it's a terrific project. I guess my question, in reading their concerns, there really wasn't anything that was insurmountable if you took the time to get together and work out some of these issues. And I'm just wondering if it wouldn't have been in your better interest to have taken the time to maybe table this and come back with the support of the community development? It just seems like you're, you know, you're swimming upstream and trying to present this with some of the issues that they presented, and those issues weren't insurmountable. You could, they could have been worked out. So my question is, what was the, your reason for coming here, making this presentation with some of the obstacles that are facing you?
That's a good question, Commissioner, and I appreciate that. And it's really twofold. Staffs made their position clear. It's evolved along the way, as has ours. They were, meaning Mr. Martin and Mr. Suddith, as late as four o'clock on Friday afternoon, were putting together their, their staff analysis and recommendations. And they got it to me just as quickly as they did. But that was, that was Friday afternoon. So we looked it over, and we don't mean to appear to be swimming upstream. And I hope you know that my philosophy is always to continue, okay, even if it's to die another day. Hopefully, it's not to do that. But in this instance, and listen to this, because it's, it's not complicated, but it's convoluted. The individual I mentioned, it's matter of public records, the guy named Chuck Thacker, who owned the property. He had multiple different developmental companies. One was Nilhand Developers. Well, it went belly up, it went to bankruptcy court. So my client, who was interested in the property long before that, bought this through the bankruptcy court. The bankruptcy court added as an exhibit to the order allowing the sale of the property, essentially the configuration you see with respect to footprint. That particular individual, Mr. Thacker, if he can come up with, I think, his six-to-seven, no, excuse me, his twelve million dollars at the end of the zoning process, that he can interject himself into it again. We don't think he's got the wherewithal to do that. We needed an up or down vote to get beyond that, the strictures of the bankruptcy court with respect to the footprints we have. So it's not obstinance on Mr. Johnson's part or West Plan's part, and I promise you, neither is it on mine or your staff's. It is what it is, but we think it has significant merit, and in most instances, I would be requesting that you continue it or delete it to a situation where you followed in totality staff's recommendations, but I'm just not in a position, unfortunately, to be able to do that. But you have a very good question, and I'm glad you asked it.
That was a good question. Mr. Campa, anything else? Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Lonny?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
I think we got another question for you, Mr. Samz.
Yeah, my questions are around access to the proposed development. Now, as part of this whole process, you had an impact study that you requested and had done, is that correct?
I prepared an impact study based on our consultant's input that was filed concurrently with the application. Since then, we've had extensive, our traffic engineer had to do extensive studies for the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, so yes.
Right. If I remember when we read this before it got tabled the first time, that was roughly five hundred-plus trips a day in and out of the proposed facilities, is that correct?
I would say so. I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry.
Well, the primary access point, would that be for those coming, say, for example, commuting from the highway Cumberland to Spring Road and then turning left, Cobb Parkway to Spring Road, turning left on Cumberland, and then they would access it, the primary access point would be off of Spring Hill?
That's the primary access point for the office component. And it also is an access point, ingress and ingress with respect to the balance of the development, but I can't see the, unless there's just significant traffic issues on Spring, I can't see where the hotel users or the retail users utilizing that. But it's a great back door, and it gets you back down to Cumberland Boulevard.
The other people that don't use Spring Hill, they would come up Spring Road, do a U-turn then to do those, turn in off of Spring Road?
Well, if they're going in that direction, they would have to. This used to have, when we started with this eight years ago, much less before the L C I, there was, there was no median. And so there's been a beautification project before the L C I was adopted, and so there's no median break there.
Then there's no, no plans to change that or create?
Oh, we'd love to, we'd love to change it, but I think the city is in a position where they prefer that there not be a median break there.
So then coming down, as you're traveling down Spring Road toward Cobb Parkway, there'd be two, a right in and a right out, there should be two of those?
Yes, sir.
And what is the, what is the distance currently between, on Spring Road, from Cumberland to Cobb Parkway? Is that less than a quarter of a mile?
It is, but where we would love and would propose, and where we at one time had a point of ingress and ingress, is equidistant between Cobb Parkway and Cumberland Boulevard, both of which are signalized intersections. And that would have met, that would have met the distancing in both directions with respect to signalization in a median break. But it didn't.
But it didn't, so we basically have that situation. They're going to do a U-turn at that light, come back, and then use the two right-ins to get in, and then they'll use the right-outs, going back into Rush Hour, going down Spring Road, and merging back into those lines. And if I saw the site plan correctly, the second right-in, as you're traveling down there, has no merge-in lane, it immediately goes into the traffic lane, is that correct?
They have deceleration lanes, they're required to.
And A R C said that they didn't see any adverse impact to the streets or the traffic flow pattern with that?
It was Greta that weighed in more on that, Mr. By, the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, and they came up with a number of system improvements that needed to be done. Quite candidly, the Braves, SunTrust, and the Battery have preempted most of the system improvements that need to be made in this area, but there were some specific to our site that they made, and we're agreeable to all of those.
Right. And then the, the light from Spring Road off of Cumberland to Spring Hill, that's, what, about a hundred yards?
From Spring Road to where, Cumberland Parkway?
From, if you're, if you're turning left for the access to the hotel?
Yes, sir.
Or from Spring Road on to Cumberland and then to Spring Hill?
Yes, sir.
That, that distance between Spring Road and Spring Hill is about a hundred yards.
I would say that.
So those hotel guests would be turning on to, and then at another light that's a hundred yards away, moving into there. So that, I just wanted to make sure I understood what the traffic pattern, proposed traffic pattern was going to be for those five-hundred to six-hundred cars that are trips that are going to come in every day.
I'm not sure what you mean by additional signalization.
Well, not additional, but the existing, using the existing signalization, we're going to have five hundred additional trips coming through that one hundred-yard distance.
Yeah, it really depends on, if you're, I don't know if you're talking A M. or P M. peak hours, or afternoon or morning traffic, but it would depend on that. Luckily, nothing that we've got is A M., P M., peak hour-oriented, except the office building, which has really its primary point of ingress and ingress on Spring Hill.
Right, right. And I'm assuming, obviously, that we have another mixed-use development that's about two blocks away on three, thirty-one Tenth Sports Avenue. That's going to have three hundred and fifty apartments that are being proposed. I'm assuming that when these studies were submitted, that they didn't take into account this other development that's being proposed or considered by the, by the panel?
That, that one is not within the Cumberland Core. We are, there's five thousand, within the projected period of time ending in calendar year two thousand and eighteen, five thousand new multifamily residences, eleven thousand projected multifamily residents within the Cumberland Core. That particular, Sports Avenue was outside of that calculation in that core.
Right.
It is in a development area under the L C I that's, that's for a development of opportunity.
Okay. All right, so I just wanted to make sure I completely understood when the recommendation was that this would not have an adverse impact to streets, what they were all considering in that, so that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. That actually came, I just, that was a quote from your staff's analysis.
Right, I understand, but it was submitted and approved by Greta, you said?
Your staff's analysis was done last week, which was two months after Greta and A R C was completed.
And what parks or trails would they have access to from this development?
Any of the, there's already sidewalks, so access to the sidewalk. We're talking about pedestrian, aerial pedestrian connectivity to get us across, since we don't have a median break, and there's really, I guess you could use crosswalks, but it's literally within walking distance of the Battery and SunTrust. As far as parks, there's a mountain-to-river bike pedestrian trail, City Marietta just opened today, one of the legs of that. I don't, I can't tell you, Mr. By, exactly where that's situated, but it does ultimately connect Galleria and ultimately down to the river.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Good questions, thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Samz? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, this is a public hearing at this time. We'd like to ask if there's anyone that'd like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. The record reflect, there are none. All right, is there any further discussion on zoning request Z one seven dash zero one four?
I'll make a motion to deny zoning request Z one seven dash zero one four, rezoning from N S and O N I to M U conditional for development of mixed-use project with three hundred and ten multifamily units, hotel, fifteen thousand square feet of retail space, and eighty thousand square feet of office space.
We have a motion to deny. Mr. Bartlett, we have a second. That was, do we have a second? I'm sorry. Mr. By is seconding. The motion to deny is successful, six-zero. Mr. Samz, thank you for your professional presentation, it's much appreciated. All right, the next item on the agenda is two zero one eight dash one dash zero zero six. This is rezoning from Office Industrial to R M twelve conditional for twenty-three town homes at a density of eleven point three-nine acres, two point zero-two acres, land lot six-six-six, that says twenty-eight eighty-one and twenty-eight eighty-five Elmwood Drive, sorry about that. This, the applicant is the Woodbury Group. I did read this, I just happened to notice that, that at that moment in time, so my apologies. Mr. Martin, the background, please.
Thank you. This zoning request will follow the same track as two other previous requests, you'll hear it tonight, and then it'll move forward to mayor and council on May twenty-first. The subject property is a vacant office park with four office buildings off of Elmwood Drive, located directly behind Johnquill Sports in Ward Two. The applicant is proposing to demo that office park and construct a twenty-three-unit town home subdivision. The zoning required to do that will, they're requesting to change it from O N I to R M twelve conditional for development of the twenty-three units at eleven point three-nine units per acre. The subject property has a future land use designation of medium-high residential, medium-high density residential, which is up to ten units per acre. Since they are requesting eleven point three-nine units per acre, they will have to request a land use change to high-density residential, which is above ten units per acre. As you can see on this feature land use map, the property to the north is Community Activity Center. The property, the adjoining property to the east and south is, got a high-density residential land use designation. And then the properties across Elmwood to the west have a medium-high density residential and Community Activity Center land use classification. This is proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing to have twenty-foot-wide rear-entry townhomes that front on Elmwood Behind those on a, on a private road are a twenty-four-foot-wide product that'll be The applicant is requesting the following setbacks, a front setback of twenty feet, an interior side of fifteen, and a rear of twenty. And then for the building separations, a front-to-rear separation of a minimum of fifty feet, and then a side-to-side of fifteen. Oh, I'm sorry, it should be side-to-side of thirty. With this request, they're showing a gated entry. The fire marshal's office and city engineer's office will have to review this entrance to make sure it meets fire accessibility code. Right now, they haven't, they haven't at this point, so this may change later on with this request. They're proposing a twenty-two-foot-wide private street through the subdivision, along with a fifty-foot access and utility easement over that, and that's for the water and sewer. Here's approximately twenty thousand, twenty-one thousand square feet of open space, the stormwater detention facility, and then nine guest parking spaces, six of which will be parallel parking on Elmwood Drive, and then three within, in the development. With this request, they're, they're requesting the following variances, to reduce the front setback from fifty feet down to fifteen, the side setback reduction from fifteen, thirty-five down to ten, the rear setback reduction from forty down to twenty, and then a building height increase from thirty-five feet to forty, and then an increase in the impervious surface area from thirty-five percent to sixty-five. Here's some building illustrations to show you what these units will look like from Elmwood. And then, these are the rear-entry homes that'll front on Elmwood, and then the front-entry townhomes that'll front on the private street. Here's a picture of the office park, and then some of the adjacent properties in and around Elmwood Drive. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from O I to R M twelve conditional for twenty-three single-family townhomes at a density of eleven point three-nine units per acre, with standard conditions from section twelve oh one, and special conditions. Number fourteen are the, are the setbacks that we discussed earlier. Fifteen is the minimum building separations that we discussed earlier. Sixteen, the townhome building should be limited to six units per building. Number seventeen, the unit shall have a minimum floor of eighteen hundred square feet. Eighteen, there should be a minimum driveway length, twenty-two feet. Nineteen, each unit shall have a fire sprinkler system. Twenty, the rear of the townhome should have architectural features that delineate each unit. Twenty-one is the requirement for a five-foot sidewalk along Elmwood Drive and a four-foot sidewalk within the development. Twenty-two is the requirement for a ten-foot landscape buffer on the north and south property lines. Twenty-three, the developer is responsible for any water and sewer improvements. Twenty-four, the developer is responsible for any fire access improvements. Twenty-five is the requirement for the- 25, um, is the requirement for the 50-foot public access and utility easement. 26 is, uh, the requirement for a right-of-way dedication along Elmwood Drive to get those sidewalks onto public property. 27 is the requirement for the stormwater management facility to be located on HOA property. 28 is the requirement for street trees along Elmwood Drive. 29, uh, deals with trees within the limits of disturbance. Uh, they either have to be, uh, protected during construction or they have to be removed. 30 ties the, the zoning approval to the site plan submitted. 31 ties the zoning approval to the elevations. And 32 are, is a list of additional stipulations submitted by the applicant. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Lightfoot. We got a question right here, Rusty.
Hey, Rusty.
Harrington, I'm sorry. Backwards tonight, I'm sorry, my apologies.
I have a question about Spring Road itself. If you're coming, if you're going west on Spring, there's a decel lane for the medium to turn onto Elwood. But if you're coming out of Elmwood and you want to go west, there isn't a, a staging, there's no way other than to jump straight out into the traffic pattern there. Would any of that be reconfigured in the middle of Spring Street?
Uh, not with this request.
As a fan of Da Vinci's Pizza, I know it's difficult to get out right there and go back west.
Right.
One block up.
It may, it may be best to go right out on Spring Road and go to Village Parkway and do a U-turn at the protected, uh, signal.
Thank you.
Well, didn't we have a discussion about U-turns earlier? All right. All right, any other questions for Mr. Martin? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Rusty. All right, at this time, we'd like to have the applicant, uh, come forward and tell us a little bit about the application. Welcome back, Mr. Sams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, um, good to be back. And, um, by way of introduction, my name's Garvis Sams, for the record, with the law firm of Sams, Larkin, Huff &amp; Bally. And, um, just prior to getting into this, uh, I, you know, your action on the last one was, was not unanticipated, but if there was ever any doubt, all I had to do was look at Earl Rice going like that through my whole presentation. And, and it was pretty, pretty much, uh, you know, it was a done, done, done deal. But, um, in any way, I don't mean to make light of this, but I do have one other question. I've noticed that you're now called the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, I've always thought you were the Planning and Zoning Board, so I want to make sure I have that right, Mr. Chairman. What are y'all?
Apparently, we are the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, all right. And I'll address you as such. Again, um, thank you for allowing me to speak. I represent the, the applicant, Woodbury Group LLC concerning this application. Have Mr. David Woodbury here with me tonight. Also have Mr. Jeff Kingsfield, who's the president of Providence Homes. And they're going, or the Providence Group of Georgia, and they're going to be the builder. David Woodbury is the, is the applicant, is the developer. And then the Providence Group of Georgia will be the, the builder. So, uh, wanted to make sure we had all components here tonight, uh, to answer any questions that I'm perhaps not, uh, in a position to answer. Mr. Martin did a good job of, of presenting this. I too like Da Vinci Pizza and Mezzaluna in this, this area. It's kind of cool the way it's, 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 it's grown up around just really neat places to eat. And I don't want to reiterate what Rusty has said, but I'd like to kind of set a stage and cover some things, uh, at the chairman's request. This is a 2.02 acre tract of land. There's four sort of 1960s Jetson-looking buildings on it that, I, I'm not sure what they housed at any certain time, but they're, they're empty now. It's south of, um, the intersection of Elmwood with, uh, Spring Road. And, um, it's, it's zoned O and I, so we're asking for a downzoning, uh, really, um, in, in terms of intensity for this project. This is in an area, since we talked about the, the LCI study and there, and there were questions about that, this is in an area of development opportunity under the LCI study. So this, in, in my estimation, I think in staff's, two envisions what, uh, you recommended and what the mayor and council ultimately adopted back in April of 2017. And this is a downzoning from O and I to RM twelve. The price points for these, and by the way, these are townhomes, attached townhomes, really kind of, uh, kind of very upscale, um, really cool-looking architecture. The price point's going to range from 380, uh, up to, um, 430 and beyond, depending on the preferences and upgrades of the, of the individuals that buy these. And, uh, they're either going to be, um, um, empty nesters with high disposable income or double-income millennials, and I would probably think the latter of the two, considering the, this area, the submarket in, in, in Smyrna. And it's very successful submarket, and that's what's, that's what's driving, uh, these type of developments. Uh, we met with your professional staff, we, we met with Ms. Bluestein, the, the ward council member. This has just recently been added, it's kind of sort of her district, it wasn't Terry and Olwitz's district, but it's in hers now, and had a good meeting with her. And on balance, the, the questions that we've gotten, I don't know if anybody's behind me that's interested or is going to pose or have questions, but we've gotten some phone calls and we've talked to some area business owners. And, um, and most of this is businesses around there as opposed to residences. And we've had questions, we've answered the questions, we think satisfactory to, to them and to staff. And in that respect, uh, we did a stipulation letter, um, and have submitted that. And we're agreeable to all of staff's standard stipulations, all of staff's special conditions and stipulations, and then the ones that we've self-imposed. And I don't preach to you like, like, like a lawyer, but just so you'll know, stipulations and conditions of zoning, uh, they run with the property. They can't be changed by any subsequent owner, they can't be changed by the builder, can't be changed by the Homeowners Association. To change stipulations and conditions, an individual and entity would have to come back before and go through the whole planning and zoning process, uh, both in meeting before he was a planning commissioner and in meeting with the mayor and council, so public hearings. The way my stipulations read, and I don't, and I assume that, that staff would feel comfortable, um, doing this, is, is to allow staff to make minor modifications as it proceeds through plan reviews, so they have to come back, um, every time through a rezoning process. When I say minor, I mean, we can't increase the density, can't increase the height, can't change roadway, uh, points of ingress and egress, can't, um, do anything that opposes your ordinance, or they can't, staff can't. So, um, it puts it in a position so that, um, we live and die by what we, we tell you tonight, as well as other developments which have been done. This is 23 townhome units. Rusty has said, uh, 1,800, but I, we, we're comfortable with a minimum of 1,950 square feet, ranging up to 2,055, and that sounds pretty specific because it is pretty specific, going from the, the, the 20-footers to the, uh, the 24-footers, and then the rear-loaded to the, to the front-loaded. The architectural style and composition are, as you see in the handouts I've given you and the ones that were shown, I didn't, um, notice until just a minute ago going through this that I inadvertently omitted the more schematic-looking architectural renderings that show the front side, rear, um, elevations of that. Those are probably more accurate. In terms of the color rendering we had, it showed a big green strip in front of that, that doesn't exist. Just FYI, we, um, brought that up with staff and, and, um, so what you see in the black and whites are probably, no, is more representative than the artist's rendering, even though it is, it is accurate to, on many levels. Uh, each of these will have a two-car garage, enough room to park two additional vehicles. We have, uh, enough, um, guest parking to satisfy the Public Works Director. There is, there was a plan for, for these to be gated, um, and, um, we've run into a little snag based on staff's comments and analysis, um, so it may or may not be gated. I, I know Mr. Kingsfield and Mr. Woodbury would like for it to be, but we'll have to run through some hoops either between now and the mayor and council or sometime in plan review, so that's our desire. But I think Mr. Martin said very accurately that, that that'll be something that'll be determined, uh, not tonight. These are for sale only, we build in the standard stipulations at 10% of these, can be rented at any one time at a lease of no less than one year. So that's two townhomes. That is a condition and a stipulation that, that runs with this. And no HOA, no, um, staff member, um, no anyone can, can change that unless it comes back through the, through the zoning process. There'll be, as with most of these type zoning, a master mandatory, HOA, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, which, um, contain strict architectural, uh, controls, as well as a, um, a third-party management company that handles day-to-day operations and makes sure the HOA's insured, so that, um, uh, they have the monies to, to do what's necessary for the common areas. And the common areas are the open space, uh, the subdivision entrance, signage, uh, any, any type of, um, kiosk for, for male purposes, um, the, the private interior streets. And even though the interior street's private, it's built to the city's design and detail specifications. All the HVAC, uh, units will be, um, totally invisible, uh, either by fencing or landscaping or otherwise. Entry signs will be ground-based monuments style. And, um, the proposed townhome community, as I said, may have a, may have a gate. Your engineer, uh, in terms of water quality, detention, and downstream considerations, has reviewed the positioning of detention and water quality area on the site and is satisfied with that. Of course, during plan review, you do a full hydrological study. And before the mayor and council, we'll have a conceptual hydrological study, uh, on that because that's what he wants us, uh, to do. Also varying, verifying points of, um, points of discharge as well. We're voluntarily conveying five feet on Elmwood. If you've been down Elmwood, it's, it's a narrow street, so we need that, even though we're not generating much traffic and, and certainly probably, certainly probably, most likely not A and P and peak traffic, considering our demographic that we, we have. And I know it's presumptuous of me to say this, but there's so many millennials that, that actually telecommute and work from home, and then the empty nesters with the large disposable incomes are, they have their coffee about 10, and they, they meander over to Da Vinci's Pizza and have lunch. Fire department, of course, we have to have maneuverability on the interior of the site, which we'll do. It'll be subject to a, a turning, um, a turning performance analysis and also subject to the fire trucks, apparatus, and safety personnel can get into this to fight a fire, both from Elmwood or, or within the interior of the property. Uh, staff is supportive of, of all of the, uh, there's five, 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 no, four? Either four or five, uh, variances, but they're all relative to setbacks, uh, and staff supports those. The, um, there's not going to be patios or porches, uh, on the, the Elm Street, Elmwood. The frontage, except on the second floors where they kind of wrap it with a, with a balcony, and, and staff seems to be fine with that. So that, that's, uh, in a nutshell, that's it. I, I, based on the stipulations suggested by staff, imposed by staff, agreed to and self-imposed by us, we, we would like, and we do hope, and we do respectfully request that you recommend approval to the, to the mayor and city council, um, for this project. Mr. Chairman, with that, uh, can respond to any questions, or Mr. Kingsfield, Mr. Woodbury. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Bye?
I promise, no, uh, U-turn questions. With regard to, you mentioned the, um, there's a stipulation or a requirement that no more than 10% of the units, which is equivalent to what, two, you said?
Yeah, 2.3, but there's not a point three, so two.
Least are rented. Just, just, so that, from my understanding and the record, how does that get enforced? And what would be the penalty if they exceeded that?
Uh, the penalty for exceeding that would be a revocation of the, of the, of the zoning. First, it would be a code enforcement action, and if it wasn't remedied through the city's implemented code enforcement action, then it would be a revocation of the zoning of the property, or potential revocation, depending on how the mayor and city council approach that. How is it monitored? Good question. How is it monitored in any jurisdiction? Presumptively, the HOA, does that, it's responsible for the, for the, ensuring that the prop, that the HOA's insured and running it up to a point where it's viable enough to run itself. So I guess it's a self-policing mode. So the answer to that is, good question. But it is a condition, and if, if something goes awry, I mean, and I'll let Mr. Kingsfield speak to it. It's, it's unlike, it's un, very unlikely that it'll be rent, any of them will be rented, and this is the reason why. First of all, to rent a townhome at a 380, $430,000 price point puts your rent at $3,500 or more. And, uh, so that, that's not likely to happen. Number two, um, what Providence wants to do is, is not, and I created a rental community, and we foresee this happening in situations where, um, a homeowner dies, a relative rents it from the estate. A situation of a hardship nature like that is really what it's supposed to address. I hope I answered your question. It was, it's, it's basically a, an easy question to understand, but a very hard one to really give you a, a good answer to.
Yeah, the, the only concern I have is just what you pointed out, is the monitoring. You know, if there's some process to audit through the Homeowners Association once a year to, for the homeowners to validate that, uh, it's owner-occupied and not leased, um, and submit that to the HOA, and the HOA then in turn submits that audited report once a year to the city so that we can confirm that what's intended is, is what's actually being, um, followed.
Uh, we'll be happy to add that as a, a condition of the zoning. I feel like one of my clients just snuck up behind me, so I was, if he has anything to say.
Must be getting close to overtime there, Mr. Sams.
My name is Jeff Kingsfield, yeah, the answer to your specific question is, when a homeowner requests, after a request, a rental agreement from the HOA, it's issued. They have to request it every year, so it has to be renewed. So those two, if they don't request it by January 1st, it gets revoked. So it's monitored, and anytime we could submit that to the city for observation. But we, we have 24 townhome communities throughout the city, all of them have a rental limitation. Our HOAs have managed that fairly successfully, so.
Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Sams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing. At this time, we'd like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Okay, is there any further discussion? All right, in the absence of further discussion, I'm going to ask for a
Can you hear me?
Motion to approve, Ms. Lightfoot.
Very often, see. I'd like to request approval for zoning request Z one seven dash zero one four, rezoning from R15 to Rad Conditional for two, why is it saying two single-family homes? Wrong one. Okay, let's try that again. I would like to request approval for zoning request Z one eight dash zero zero six, rezoning from OI to RM dash twelve Conditional for 23 townhomes at a density of 11.39 acres, 2.02 acres, land lot six, 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 dash 2881 and 2885 Elmwood Drive. Approval.
We have a motion to approve, Ms. Lightfoot. We have a second, I believe I saw, Mr. Bye. Please vote. Motion is approved, six, zero. Again, Mr. Sams, thank you for your presentation. Oh, Lord. All right. We tabled the item G on our agenda earlier. Do want to, uh, recognize Mr. Campo for standing in my absence last month. Appreciate that, and going forward, I'll make sure that I don't have any more of those unscheduled disappearances. Any comment, Mr. Sudrith, anything to add? We're about to, but I, I always like to be reminded by somebody before I give it up. Of course. All right. Last item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from March 12, 2018. Uh, the board members are in possession of the minutes, are there any changes, amendments that you've made at this time? In the absence of that, can we get a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Mr. Bye, who is the most active board member tonight, and second, Ms. Lightfoot, who is rivaling him for that activity. Please vote. The minutes are approved, six, zero. Uh, without any further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:10. The PM. See you later, Earl. He is awesome. Absolutely.